Yes, sir.
Jim Henry Hoffman from Stanford here. I admit to a great deal of conflict as the decisions have been made about going harder into Afghanistan, as you apparently do, and I actually believe to a certain extent our president has felt. But in the end, in my own heart, I've come down to the point where I believe if we essentially evacuated Afghanistan, that we would be right back where we were on September 10th, 2001, with the Taliban in charge and very possibly with many more Al Qaeda present in Afghanistan. And I do believe that the threat in Pakistan, the potential of Taliban or others acquiring nuclear weapons is partly supportive of our being in Afghanistan as well. So, in the end, I come down to support for President Obama's decision. I don't believe he submitted. I don't believe any of us in this room believe there's an easy, obvious, definite slam dunk solution in Afghanistan. And the path we're on may not work, but I believe that President Obama has done his level best to try to analyze what is the best way forward, at least for the foreseeable future. And I, for one, am prepared to support him and would recommend that you support him by voting for the funds that are needed. I personally believe that for the, ever since September 11th, none of us have really been asked to sacrifice for what our country has faced. And I'm prepared to stand here and say that if we have to pay more taxes, if we have to, as a country, involve ourselves more emotionally, all of us, instead of just the folks who are fighting, I think we really need to have a national sense of commitment to dealing with this in the months and years ahead, because it's not going away, and I don't believe that we're going to do it without all of us rather wholeheartedly supporting the effort. Thank you.
I'm not sure I would have believed that a call for taxation would have gotten that kind of applause, but in some ways, to reach all of our countries.
Hi, my name is Richard Roydies. I live in Westport. I graduated from West Point in 1967, after a year in Vietnam. I spent two years doing Asian Defense Planning on the Secretary of Defense's staff in Pentagon. This, to me, is deja vu all over again. Supporting a corrupt government in Kabul, supporting a corrupt government in Saigon. You know, you talk about, well, when we leave Afghanistan in turmoil, where we've got turmoil in Yemen, in Somalia already, where we can put troops in there. Afghanistan is under resource, well, under general Petraeus' guidelines. We need to put a million troops in Afghanistan. Basically, I think you're caught in the Petraeus and McChrystal. Our two best generals have said, "We need these troops. This is what we can take, we think we can do over 18 months." At the end of 18 months, there's a strategic review, I gather. I think you do what Senator George Aitken and Vlachy Krasnyk just back then did on board, declare victory and get out. Okay? The other thing that has disturbed me about this evening is I'm sitting here, listening to you becoming an expert on Afghanistan, and I think back eight years ago, Chris Hayes became an expert on Iraq. And, you know, two trips, 10 trips, 14 trips. There's only so many hours you got in a day. I'd rather see that time spent on figuring out how do we build employment and work in this district. And I'm for a surtax right now to pay for both Afghanistan and Iraq. I think this BS about borrowing the money from the Chinese or wherever else has got to stop. If we're going to fight a war, we can pay for ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you for that observation, and let me just say, one of the reasons what Afghanistan did not really in any meaningful way come onto the agenda of the United States Congress until the president announced his, made his announcement on December 1st. Agree or disagree with the activities that the Congress has taken, the Democratic or Republican Party has taken, the economy and the situation it's in for us is absolutely number one.
You're an expert on the tribes in Afghanistan. Tell me about dealing with unemployment in Ridgefield.
I am so far from an expert on the tribes of Afghanistan. I would never characterize myself that way. But we are talking about, right now, 950 lives lost and the potential to spend $100 billion every single year for some period of time. I will devote some time to that, and without any way denigrating the importance of the economy. But, thank you, sir. Do we have a question?
I have two questions. One is very bleak. I'll just yes or no. First question is, as everybody knows, one-third of detainees are yet in this, right? Do you support sending them back to Yemen?
No.
Okay. The second question is regarding Executive Order 12425, which was actually signed by President Reagan in June 18th. On December 17th, Barack Obama partially signed an amendment to this executive order, which allows international policy agencies unlimited immunity from UNESCO. Could you please explain what is happening and why is happening? Why the Interpol people are not under United States laws and why losing our liberties and freedom if they can't live?
This is the Interpol decision that was made to provide certain freedoms to Interpol to operate here in the U.S. Is that right? It's the president's decision? I'm not an expert on Afghan tribes. I'm also not an expert on Interpol. What I do know is that Interpol in this country is staffed and run by Americans. Interpol has, first of all, let's be clear about what Interpol is. Interpol is an information-sharing entity. It has no investigative or executive powers. It is an information-sharing entity. When we know about bad guys that are British, we share that through Interpol with the British and through Europe and other countries. So it's important that people understand that there is no investigative or police powers. The decision that Obama did, which I guess builds on the original Reagan decision, was fairly routine inasmuch as it accords the freedoms that are accorded to any, some of the freedoms that are accorded to international agencies operating in the United States, the United Nations, embassies, UNESCO, et cetera, certain freedoms to operate. But it in no way, to my understanding, and I'm telling you right now, I'm not an expert on this, but in no way gives any sort of police power to anybody who is not of a U.S. jurisdiction, city, state, or federal.
But I'm sorry, I'm confused. Why was the amendment signed? Because it specifically says that it allows international policy agencies, they are excluded, they have immunity from UNESCO. At the same time, we're reading the Miranda rights to terrorists who kill our people. I don't understand. There's rules, like there's upside down. We, I can't understand. There was a reason why this amendment went through. I'm trying to understand. Where should we go? The answer.
So, I do want to get back to Afghanistan, but let me close with an important thought. When we were all on vacation, you know, this executive order was signed that gives Interpol some powers and liberties in our country. If we are serious about fighting terrorism, and I believe we are, Interpol is one of the key tools that we have for sharing intelligence and information with other Western democracies. So, I hope that this doesn't, my sense is that this has become very political and that, you know, cable news is making a big deal out of this. Let's remember that Interpol is one of the key tools we have for finding the bad guys. And thank you for counting. We move back to Afghanistan. Yes, sir.
Yes, Congressman. Good evening. Appreciate this opportunity to have a town hall with you.
Judge, give your name, please.
Yes, Steve Corcoran from New Canaan. And I would like to, let's say, not only, let's say, not necessarily state an opinion, but rather, you know, get your thoughts, your point of view, what actions you would take on, you know, aspects of this Afghanistan topic. And I guess I also have a bias towards saying, "We're in a long war. This is a crucial area of the world in terms of, let's say, you know, dealing with Afghanistan and related Pakistan and the nuclear weapons." So this isn't anywhere else in the world. It's a key battleground. With regard to General McChrystal's recommendation to, I guess, increase the troop levels by 40,000, and I gather President Obama increased by 30,000, how do you feel about that? Would you, would you agree? And I've got three quick questions, but would you agree with the additional 10,000? Would you lobby for that? Would you vote for that? The second thing is, with regard to a deadline, you know, why, you know, what would you go for? I mean, would you let the generals determine what the conditions are on the ground at the time and go with their recommendation, or would you, I guess, support this 12-month or 18-month deadline? The third thing is, how do you pay for it? I would say that the primary responsibility of the government is defense of the country. And, you know, and I believe actually in a limited role for government as well, and that's, we'll put the health care issues off to one side for a moment. So, I would say, first and foremost, that's where our tax dollars should be going, to my view. So, what about your view, though? So, I had three little quick questions.
Right. So your first question was, would I support the increase of 10,000 troops? Under present circumstances, no. Why? Because I asked General McChrystal exactly that question. I was concerned by the fact that McChrystal asked for 40,000 troops, and the president, after a three-month period of deliberation, said 30,000. That's one brigade shy of what McChrystal asked for. I asked him, I said, "Can you get the job done that you need to get done?" His answer was yes. So, no, I don't think I'm going to take the lead to try to second-guess McChrystal and Obama on that issue. I'm sorry, your second question was, your second?
Okay. Well, I mean, the other side of that, though, is, so you're saying, no, the general made a recommendation, but even though he might take longer to accomplish things, or it's at a greater risk to the level of success, you would say, even though he said, "Yeah, I think I can get the job done, but the probabilities are lower," you would say, "Okay, go with 30,000?"
If McChrystal had answered my question, that 30,000 means more dead Americans, longer time, I'm not sure I could do it. I would have a radically different view than I do right now. I would say, "Wait a second. If we're either going to do this right and do it big and do it the way we should do it, or we're not going to do it at all, let's not do half-measures." This was my concern. He did not indicate that he thought that this was a half-measure. So if I was concerned, if I heard concern pinned, and look, nor am I an expert on, you know, troop levels than I am on Afghan tribes. A gentleman made the point over here, General Petraeus, who recently wrote the definitive manual on counterinsurgency, would suggest that the right number of troops on the ground is actually five or six or 700,000 more than what McChrystal has asked for. That is a deeply concerning thing. But, no, look, if McChrystal had had a different answer, I would be very concerned, given his answer. Again, I'm not going to take the lead and say, "No, I would like General McChrystal and President Obama to put forward 10,000 troops that they don't really think they need."
So, the 12-month or 18-month deadline?
Oh, right.
Where do you stand on that?
Well, let's be clear. It's very important that we be clear on this quote-unquote "deadline," because it's really nothing like a deadline. And you may like that, or you may not like that. The fact of the matter is that the president was very squishy, my word, about what that 18 months means. He, if you look at what the administration officials said around it, they said, "We will abolish it. We will begin to make a withdrawal. It will be based on, and our actions will be based on, conditions on the ground." I think that that's the right answer. If we, I don't think you would say, "We are absolutely positively having everybody out by this date certain," because that would be to lose the ability to adapt and to learn and to gather information as you go. So, deadline's the wrong word. And again, you can like that or not like that, but believe me, the president was pretty squishy about what that 18 months meant. And I told you right up front, this is not an 18-month project. If you think that we are going to significantly reduce our troop commitment in 18 months, I think you're wrong. And your third question was, it wasn't a question, you said you would support tax dollars to pay for it.
Yes, and saying that being a primary mission, a goal, a function of the government.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Could you tell us the information that was shared with you regarding the CIA explosion and losing these vital resources of intelligence? I mean, I personally, I astounded by that event. These folks represent hundreds of years of experience, language knowledge, cultural knowledge. How could someone that just walked in there and not gone through all these security checks to get that close to somebody who had totally destroyed that capability? This is a real, real setup to my mind. So what information was shared with you?
To be clear, nothing that you don't know. Nothing classified has been shared with me. The information is beginning to dribble out. What I know is, we lost seven CIA officers, one Jordanian. The individual who entered this base in Afghanistan was an agent brought to us by Jordanian intelligence. He was a doctor. There was this notion, he was a, I guess, the individual was a Jordanian. There was a notion that he, as an agent, could lead us to Al Qaeda leadership. The CIA made a terrible mistake in assuming that this guy was a friend of them, and of course, he wasn't. And so, my guess is, you know, we always seem to learn post facto. My guess is, in the land of Virginia right now, people are doing a lot of thinking about how we, about how we treat people, even when we think are on our side. So, you're right, this was, this is a terrible loss. It is obviously a hugely empowering and morale-building thing for the bad guys and a huge loss for us. And this has not been a good one for the CIA. That was a terrible mistake they made. This is beyond the scope of the meeting, like the Christmas Day bomber. I sit on the Department, I sit on the Committee on Homeland Security, and that we would find ourselves eight years after 9/11, with a guy whose father went to the CIA, who went to the embassy, who bought a ticket with cash, who didn't have luggage, who bought a one-way ticket, who we had picked up intercept. I mean, this guy had red flags. I'm talking about the Christmas Day bomber. It was a colossal, colossal failure of our national security operation.
Might I suggest, if on that committee, if you're given an opportunity, to suggest that there be a fairly routine checklist? For example, everybody gets checked at the front gate, you know, everyone, you know, for no exclusions, no exceptions, like the White House invitation party? Or, you know, I mean, you know, it would be just like there is in a good hospital, there ought to be a certain checklist, that these are the steps you take before you get, you know, that you don't get the long leg amputated or something like that. So if you're on the committee, I would strongly recommend that.
Absolutely. No, it's, as you can tell, I'm appalled by the performance of our agencies, in respect to the Christmas Day Detroit situation. Yes, Congressman?
Good evening. My name is Maria Barbenchuk from Stanford, Connecticut. I have a kid, 18-years-old. Legal enlistment in the Army this year. I have to leave this country because they're kicking out to me. I have no papers, I have no, I'm illegal here. But my son born here, he going to the Army. Who going to wire me the life to my son? You know, it's like, if I'm going Ecuador, who going to carry him? He going Army, and who going to, I don't know. It's, I feel like, I'm going to leave my son here, if he going to the war, and he disappear my life. You know, it's like, I feel really, really, I don't know. I have my hands tied, everything, because I really came to Afghanistan in this country. My son born here, I live in this country 21 years. I have three kids, one is 18 and the other is 17, both think they're going to Army. And the little one is with the baby's father. I don't see my baby for 31 days, because he took the baby. He think I'm going back to Ecuador, and doesn't bring no more to here. You know, I feel very, very disappointed about the rights to here, and I don't know what I think about if my kids going Army. What I, you know, I feel really sad about.
Thank you. Whatever your status, thank you, that your son chooses to serve this country. Gentlemen made the point. Gentlemen made the point that the wars that we have fought over the course of the last eight years have been, the cost of those wars in terms of people and emotional distress and money have been borne by a very, very small number of people. We have not collectively sacrificed or borne the expense or the pain of that. So regardless of your status, again, thank you for your summary.
Thank you.
Yes, Congressman?
Hi, I'm Christina Hamm from Stanford. It seems to me that the military solution hasn't worked for eight years and/or in history because the Russians were at I don't know how many years, and they bankrupted them and brought Russia to its knees. So I, and I think it's kind of an Al Qaeda wish that we get totally drained by following them to Afghanistan. I think, my opinion is, I think we should get the CIA to really get it together and really be able to do a good job, have a small presence there, and really use other, like the woman said before, other means. Think outside of the box to make Afghanistan work better, at the same time, knowing that we're not, it's not a doctrine, every country has a trouble spot. And I think that there, I don't know, there may be another reason to be in Afghanistan. I don't really understand why we're following this Iraq, the same thing that happened to Iraq. We didn't really succeed in Iraq, and we're not going to succeed in Afghanistan. We're just going to waste a lot of money. But we have to improve our security by having better intelligence arms in the world, and within our own country. Because the more that we look like the people that kill everybody for, in this kind of aggressive way, we're going to band together more. We're inviting, I think the terror has been accelerated because of our presence there, and I think our presence there is going to make it work. I do understand the problem with the Taliban. That's an internal civil war problem for Afghanistan, and I think we could support the regular population in a different way. But I think we really have to start thinking outside the box. Not that the military isn't a good thing. I mean, I'm a Vietnam generation person, and I know that the military thinks, certainly someone, Chris, of course, has been wanting to do his job the way, with all the guts he's got to do. It's a job we're trying to do. I don't really get it. And I think that, I mean, history does say, Churchill said it, I mean, this other gentleman said it before, and the Russians, and my, I don't buy, Afghan fighters murdered the Russians. I mean, there were so fears, because they believed so much in what they're fighting for. I don't think that it's so difficult to train the Afghans. They don't have a fire. They just don't know what they want to fight for. And so that's the problem. It's a political problem. It's not a military problem, Mark. And I think you have to speak with that in part.
Thank you. Do we have any more to answer?
Peter Hocken, Stanford. I spoke to my nephew today, who's in Afghanistan. This is his third tour of duty. I communicated with him. I should just say to him that when he joined up, I was extremely against it, and I was definitely opposed to his going. He was totally gung-ho, and in that year and a half, I now support our effort, and he thinks we're wrong. So, he says to me, he says, first of all, I said, "How many of Al Qaeda have you ever seen in that?" He said, "I've never seen one." And to your point of your nephew going and fearing for the Miranda rights, the U.S. military is the best-trained military in the world. They never, ever, ever fire unless they have clear line of sight. They are told that the point of Al Qaeda is to draw fire into crowds to make the U.S. seem like the enemy. So the idea that the U.S. are hampered, they're not. They're told to be very restrictive in fire so that they don't draw the population against them. Because our point is not to defeat Al Qaeda. Our purpose is to convince Afghanistan to support our purpose there. So, the military issue, putting aside for a moment. My issue is one, and it goes to some of the other issues. I'm a big believer in President Obama's personal popularity in Europe. I would like to see him go and have a Marshall Plan in Europe, where he uses some of his personal goodwill to convince the Europeans to now spend as we have spent there, because fundamentally, Afghanistan, unlike Iraq, is a world war. We are all in this together, and we do not win by ourselves, but we can be defeated by ourselves. I want to see the French, the British, the Belgians, the Saudis, the, all of them committing manpower and resources, even if it's building schools, because we are not there alone.
That's really critical. I made reference to this before I announced, it was just so startling to me. 700 Connecticut National Bear Troops going over 7,000 NATO troops. To the credit of the British, the British are actually sending mortar toward the ground to be killed toward it politically, although the British.
But not the French.
I don't know if the Dutch or the Canadians and a bunch of others are withdrawing. So unfortunately, the 7,000 increase is going to be met with a 7,000 decrease, and we're going to find ourselves, but you're absolutely right. This is a world's fight, and as usual, around the world, we are bearing the cost in men, women, and dollars. Number one, we went up from down from over.
Samar Mitan from France. I have lived my whole life that war is not the answer, and I am so saddened by the president's reaction to send more troops to Afghanistan. I think what we've heard from people tonight, the things they are talking about is a humanitarian mission, and we separate that from the object of filling or overcoming people. We have different cultures, we have different, entirely different way of life in Afghanistan. Do they want to become a democratic community? We don't even know. That's very doubtful. So, nation building is not the answer. Humanitarian, I feel, is the answer. And similarities to me between Vietnam and Afghanistan are very similar, and I did work against the Vietnam War, and I'm very saddened to hear people saying today that they would give a dollar towards the war, or they would pay a little more taxes toward the war. What kind of sacrifices that, when people are dying? And do you ever think that people are dying because we're in this war? So, my, what are my solutions, besides the humanitarian effort in Afghanistan, to make people understand, because you're all saying this is a war? I am totally against war, but if this is a war, then people should know it, and you should instigate the draft. And then, people will realize what they're supporting, because right now, it's that woman's son, who, she's being deported, but her son is going to Afghanistan. It's that woman's nephew that's going to Afghanistan. We don't, we don't have those feelings, because we're not touched. Our families were touched in a way, in the way of the war, not just in a monetary way, although money has been served everyone here, but we have to have a human concern, a humanitarian concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Congressman, for having this, kind of, invited to the center, because I live here in Stanford. I guess first off, what I'd like to just say is that I don't support this war at all in any way. That said, I understood when President Obama ran for election that he often said that Iraq was not the problem Afghanistan was, and that that would be his priority when he was elected. And so it's not a real surprise to me that he made the decision to sort of set a deadline, have a deadline in this war. But I am upset, and I feel a little bit, I feel that the whole era of this candidacy spoke to people like me, and people like me and my peers sort of felt that war is more than silly, it's barbaric, and it's an outdated way to handle things in the international community. So, really, what I'd like to get at is that if we are committed to this war, what real international alliances are we attempting to form? Because we can say that Czechoslovakia is an alliance, but if all they give us is toothbrushes, then that's not a real alliance. So, I mean, what work are we doing, what work are we doing back in D.C. to get more alliances besides 7,000 NATO troops or a certain amount of UK troops when the air and verse is right? Could you just answer that?
Well, the honest answer to your question is that it's, the executive branch, the president and our NATO people have tried. This war is, I'll tell you how it breaks out in October, when I actually sort of look at this objectively. My staff hates it when I admit that we're doing a poll, but I actually care about how people feel about it. In this district, in October, people were about 50-50 on the war. In this district, in October, people were about 50/50 on the war. In Europe, it is wildly unpopular. So our guys, NATO executive guys, are really sailing against the wind on this issue. We have been, as individual congresspeople, so focused on financial regulatory reform, on the economy, on jobs, these other issues that came up, that we as individuals have not really had the scope or the ability to influence that much. But I will tell you that, and I've said this several times tonight, it is just mind-bogglingly appalling that this world's fight is being borne by us. By the way, it's not just in Afghanistan, it's in Iran, right? Where China and Russia are being part of the problem, while we sort of take the lead on between the Iranians, the consequences of developing nuclear weapons. It happens everywhere, it's happened for the last 40 years everywhere, and I wish I knew what the right answer was. European countries have much more, and European political leaders have much more difficult situations than President Obama. And you articulated exactly the point of view that creates that skepticism and unwillingness to contribute to the effort there.
My name is Colin Bernstein, I'm from New Canaan, Connecticut. Number one, is any dollar we spend on armed forces at this point, we should spend at least a half a dollar on the VA, because it's quite obvious at this point that the Veterans Association administration is fairly dysfunctional. Number two is, when I was in the line, I thought I was going to tell you, going from 12 or 18 months to Afghanistan, spent $100 billion, but then you mentioned to someone a few moments ago, don't ever believe this is going to be 12 or 18 months. So if you want to know how we feel, I feel that if it's not going to be 12 or 18 months, then I would be absolutely against sending troops there. I can only tell you that my neighbor's son went to Iraq three times, and has had no job for six months, coming back from Iraq. This was a young man that I watched walk his brother's at a bus stop, and they were number 15 years ago. The VA has got nothing to help him, and our government has got even less. I think it's time to take care of these boys at home, and we stop muddling around in place we know nothing about.
Okay, come back over here. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Bobby Pavia, I'm from Stanford, Connecticut. First of all, I really appreciate your honesty coming in here and saying that you really don't know where you stand. I think that's something that many of your constituents can learn from. I'm here listening to everything, absorbing everything here, and is it just me, or is like, is history repeating itself, and nobody's looking at it? Are we in perpetual war, perpetual peace right now? Because we're supporting a crooked government, you know, just like we did in Oria, just like we did, you know, Afghanistan, when Bin Laden was a freedom fighter, you know, for the CIA. What is... The president said this was a just war, right? When I think of a just war, I think of World War II, right? This doesn't match up to that for me. When this is all said and done, what are we in Afghanistan for? And when you vote, whether to fund or not, right, about what people have given or lost or whatever, 950 people, look at everybody in here, and that's a person. And when something happens to them, it affects their family and those around them, and it's circling in circles. It's not just 950 numbers, you know, it's 950 faces, you know? Younger than me, you know, younger than most of us going over there, do it. So please take that into consideration. We can have peace before 2012. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, this is Chris Jacobson from Stanford. Originally, I was going to talk about very hard, and how our luck of your position in Afghanistan is, but others already mentioned that. So I thought I would take a slightly different route. As a teenager, I feel, I think we're helpless in situations like these. I mean, even if the government was to raise taxes, I personally am not paying taxes. And I think that many others, you know, teenagers like me, who are the next generation of leaders in this country, feel like, as if the government, you know, we, as if our resources are not being utilized. I think that the way the Obama campaign used a grassroots kind of method to organize and to make people in the community active and doing something about this campaign, I think campaign can, should possibly be applied to something like this. I want to ask you if you have any ideas of how we can get people involved to make a difference and raise funds or do something, so we're not just helpless. Even fun is a problem, but we want to be part of the solution.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a wonderful sentiment, and it echoes what we've heard here quite a bit tonight, which is the awareness, that far too few of us are bearing the cost, and bearing the suffering, and bearing the pain for some very, very serious issues that we're involved in. So what can you do? You can do exactly what you're doing tonight, which is to show up and make your voice heard. And you know what? Whether you agree with me or disagree, or I just, I don't care. I said this during the healthcare town hall, they were tough, there were people who were shouting and screaming, and I loved it. I loved it, because those people who were shouting and screaming, red-faced, but we were disagreeing, they could have been home watching TV. They weren't, they were here. And that's a great, great thing, it's the strength of who we are. What can you do? I want to riff off something that has come up a little bit, and that is our veterans. I was over there on the 22nd and 23rd, these young guys, these young women, you know, it's two days from Christmas, meeting a lot of them, and they're there in a dusty place, you know, wondering if we're thinking about... And it sounds trite, but you know what? Get your friends together, send care packages over there, write letters to these guys, work with the VFWs and the American Legion's in your town, just ask what you can do. Because again, look, I'll make a vote one way or another on this, and one of the nice things, it's very different today from where we were in Vietnam, is that we will agree and disagree on this war, and on Iraq, and everything else, but I think we all agree that the guys who raised their hand, and the women who raised their hand, said, we're going to join the service to deserve an awful lot more help and support from us than they get right now. So that's my best, my best request. There have been some really... First of all, thank you again for turning our... And thank you for having such a civil, constructive, and valuable discussion. I would like to get a sense from the room, and I want to ask one question in a show of hands. And the question is, do you support the president's plan, or do you oppose it, or are you not sure? I just, I'm pretty curious about the room. So would those of you who support the president's plan for increasing troops, please raise your hand? Those of you who oppose the president's plan? And those of you who are not sure? I recall the not sure camp maybe about a fifth, and the rest, the yes/no question, roughly evenly split, which is, I guess, a new surprise. Let me... Thank you again for coming to this. I am conscious every morning when I wake up, that my title is representative. I represent you, and so I don't really seem to be an expert on Afghan tribes. I try to learn all that I can, and this is the most important part of my job, to understand where you are, where you're coming from, and to bring that to Washington, DC. Let this be the beginning, not the end of this discussion. Call my office, send emails, come visit in Washington. Thank you very much.